Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm ready to do.
Get it. I just, you know what? I used the wrong browser. There's too many browsers.
Man, I just downloaded that.
You download. You have the same cursor.
Oh, yeah, no.
I think I have to do that. That's something even I miss.
I'm reading your talking. The paper that wasn't.
You're stuck with me now, Neil.
I got, yeah. We all rise with a bunch of allegiance. But the regions to the United States, America, to the root flower, which stands my nation.
Welcome everyone to the regular public meeting for the Gwinnett Board of Supervisors. For Tuesday, February twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty four. The Board of Supervisors did meet in executive session on February nineteenth and prior to tonight's meeting to discuss matters of personnel in real estate. Want to first start off with citizens' comments, concerns, or questions for items not on the agenda?
Good evening, Danielle. My name is Michael Vander Swann. I live at Six Richard's Way in Lower Gwinnett. And I'm here to ask some questions about the status of the cell towers. I think that's initiative that we started, or I started with you, with the board about a year and a half ago. So bottom line, what is the status of the two towers that were proposed a few several months back?
Um, I'm gonna let our staff give you the most updated information because I don't want to misspeak, so. Mimi, are you comfortable?
I can do that, yes. Um, and unfortunately, Michael, I don't have too much new, that that's newer than the last time we've emailed. So, um, you know that Rise Up Towers was looking for an alternative location to the tower that was proposed here by the township building. Um, they were looking at Gwinnett Mercy Academy Elementary School, and that has not worked out. That is definitely off the table. Um, I think maybe the last time we emailed, I wasn't confident anymore, but it wasn't, there was nothing definite. But that is. It is, yeah, it's. So now Rise Up is looking, um, to see if there's any other properties that would still work and fill the gap as effectively as the the tower, either at the Township Building or among the Township properties that are very close to here, which is like Texaco Station, Veterans Park, Township Building is kind of the central area where a tower can really effectively fill the gap in cell phones and service. So somewhere in this vicinity, they're trying to see if there's another location, um, that doesn't create problems, you know?
So the first one that was proposed was on the property of the fire department, and it was a public hearing about its pros and cons. And I think one person had an objection. I think that was a previous supervisor of the board, and he had an objection because it obstructed some of his view. Is that about right?
He, he wasn't a former elected official. He used to do work for the township, but.
But he was the person, the only person that had an objection because of the visual obstruction.
I think he was the only person at that, that big meeting who objected to it.
And say to that one person, we need a power. This is the only site that's gonna work. We're sorry it's gonna obstruct your view.
We don't want to put that on Mimi. So the, so what we're doing right now is we're trying to do our due diligence to explore all potential other opportunities. So Gwinnett Mercy, um, Elementary School just kind of made that determination, I think, within the past few weeks. So since they've made that determination, we're giving Rise Up a little bit of time to explore all other opportunities that still cover the same area. So it's not a whole lot of properties that are within this zone that would be able to provide the reach that we originally intended. They need to do their due diligence and explore that as soon as they're done in what we feel like is an appropriate amount of time. Then we come back, reassess, and reevaluate, and look at what options we have left.
So when the original Site A fire department was proposed, was that not proposed after some due diligence?
Oh, absolutely. So, and that was the presentation that you saw. So he talked about the outage areas, the gaps, what would need to be, like where the most ideal location would be and so forth and so on.
So.
So we don't, we want to.
Follow up on that question later. I understand. We didn't do boards to do.
Yeah.
The November twenty eighth meeting of the board, the minutes indicate that you considered the Pendleton Tower. We further consideration, the board listened to further discussion on the sighting of the tower in Pendleton Woods. That's what the minutes say.
Yeah.
What was the decision of that consideration?
I believe we amended.
We want to let our solicitor. The board amended the conservation easement to allow the construction of the tower on the park property.
This has been done?
This has been done.
Okay. Would that be reflected in the minutes soon?
Uh, it should be.
It should have been on the minutes.
Meeting where that was done.
Yeah.
All I read was that further consideration was given to the tower in Pendleton Woods.
Is this the advertised minutes or the, or the minutes that we approved?
On the website.
I got you.
There, there was, um, there was a meeting that followed that one when Tessie had requested that, um, they bring somebody back in to talk about the destruction.
Yeah, that was the further discussion.
Yeah.
Yeah, and was, but based on that consideration of that hearing, the decision has been made to move forward with that site?
The decision was made to amend the conservation easement to allow construction of the tower.
So that the decision was made to make the con, make the amendment to the.
Cause it's a long legal.
Been done?
The amendment has been done, but it's a sort of a lengthy process. So we got that.
We could also negotiate a lease with Rise Up.
Okay. So is there anything in the way of that tower construction beginning?
Just the location for the second town.
Yeah.
For the second tower. So Rise Up Tower wants to do both at the same time.
I think that's the plan, yes.
Makes sense. Okay. And the decision to amend the, amend the documents.
The conservation.
Has been its document.
Yes.
Very good. End of December meeting, the board discussed the two thousand and twenty four priorities and the work plans. Has, have they been published?
The capital projects?
The priorities of the twenty twenty four township calendar. Has that list of priorities been published?
It was in the meeting packet. I think that was the tree map that was presented to you.
Yeah.
It, it has been published?
Yeah, it was in the, it was in the meeting minutes that were posted online. But it's the packet.
It's in the, it was in a meeting packet. It's not separately on the board's agenda because what, that was a very early draft of a, a new kind of way of presenting, um, different priorities that all the different talent departments are working on. So we wanted to run the concept path, this, I wanted to run the concept past the board to make sure it was something that would work for the board. The board liked it. So the staff is working on building that out. So we don't have a final version of it, which is why we don't have it by itself on the website. It is in the meeting packet if you go into there, if you want to see that early draft.
They were presenting to them, yeah, they're presenting them to us.
Those objectives are still being developed.
Correct.
Can you tell me, Danielle, is the construction of the towers one of the priorities? Both towers?
Absolutely. For twenty twenty four, yes.
Okay. It also said that you discussed the work plan for those objectives. Has there been a work plan? In other words, a schedule?
That's what they're working on. That's what staff are developing and building out and prioritizing and kind of.
And will that be published so I can follow up on it?
I believe the intention is for once completed, we publish it on the website.
When it's completed.
When it's done and presented to the board, it'll be in that meeting packet, but then after the board is good with it, we'll have it on the website and make sure it's very accessible for people.
So I'll, I should look forward to proposed, uh, agenda item that will say the board is going to discuss its objectives and its work plan? Okay.
I mean, the very goal of it is to provide you and others like you that are very intrigued about maybe a specific item or or things in general, to be able to go and watch as some things, we're working through it, to see where it is, to see where the status of it is, and to be able to have that information at your fingertips.
Take that every week. And, 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 Mimi, if it does come out that it's gonna be on agenda, would you mind sharing, you know?
No problem.
I got myself into a bit of a mess here because, as you know, I submitted a hundred and six signatures. And I get a call about once a week from various people, hey, what's going on with the towers? Can you tell me what's going on? So now I have to come before.
Now you're an advocate.
Well, to ask for.
You're an advocate, mister. Well, congratulations.
Truth is, we still can't make calls.
Absolutely.
They still get dropped. And now the spring is coming, fortunately. And what I've learned about cellular connections, when they're weak, the leaves on the trees interfere with the connections. So it gets worse in the summer. So it's only been about a year and a half that we've worked. It's, it's really dragging, but I understand.
Nope. The, the reality is nobody wants a cell tower in their view.
Nobody wants a cell tower in their backyard. I know.
And so that's honestly, so that's become an issue. And just when the one person showed up, um,
Amy.
Right, Ted, when Mr. Amy showed up and there were people, there were people who subsequently voiced their displeasure at that location. So it's, this is not an easy.
Yeah, I understand how difficult it is. There's fifty people that don't want it. There's five hundred people that can't make a cell phone call.
Absolutely.
There are businesses that are suffering.
I, I understand. I mean, everybody here understands.
If Hearthfield, if Hearth put to notice when they had a full, if they had to make a full disclosure, when they were selling those houses on Richard's Way, we like to tell you that you can't make cell phone calls here. What would that do to property value?
You guys want it on Richard's Way?
I live on Richard's.
Do you want the tower there? Because I mean, that would solve one, that would solve one problem. For real?
Would you be upset if you could see it from your home? Now, we're asking you seriously.
Back there?
Well, it actually would be in front of you.
In the front?
Mm-hmm.
In the front yard?
Not the front yard.
But it, in your front view.
Somewhere off the Pendleton bike.
Mm-hmm. Would that upset you?
We'd have to look at it, sure.
Well, so everybody has that issue.
Yeah.
I, 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 I hear you, but like, we put it in Veterans Park.
We moved.
That would not, that would not make you or your neighbors happy.
If we moved Veterans Park and decided we would dedicate this.
Top of a building, so.
If that's the top of a building, doesn't, this type of tower doesn't work on top of a building.
They put them on water tower.
I, I know they are, but this.
This is a true.
This is something different.
This is a pole. This is a tower. I mean, so, I mean, that's what we're grappling with. We don't want anyone to be upset or feel like their, their view is, is.
Not without saying we've considered all the options.
Yeah.
We know people are gonna be disappointed, but if it lands in their front yard or their view. But at least we can say we have looked at every option, and this is the best.
We're trying to mitigate it as much as we possibly can.
The fire department property did not look that bad to most people.
It's because you don't live in the neighborhood right behind.
So there's a neighborhood behind it and, and the other individuals started to articulate their.
I do.
You don't want a bad.
It doesn't matter what I want. My neighbors don't. It's like your neighbors don't. So that, that's, to, to be completely candid with you, like, this is what the board deals with.
Yeah.
So that's not an easy decision.
So it doesn't look too bright for Tower A.
I, I wouldn't say it doesn't look, we're committed to building a cell tower.
We're committed to filling that gap.
Have it, but it's, there are other, it's not, it's not a binary choice of, it just, there's too many other considerations. As you, as you've acknowledged, again, you don't want it, you don't want it on Richard's Way.
And the, the township building's not off the table. You keep.
Yeah, it's not off.
No, no.
It's not the table. We are just considering other options as well to see what the best option is in this neighborhood, because we need something in this area to fill that gap.
And so we're, we're, Rise Up is looking at everyone, and we're asking them, look at everyone.
I know the range is only about a mile and a half or two miles.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And I live right in the gap, too. I, I.
Yeah, a hundred and fifty feet.
Well, okay, so I look forward to the, um, the work plan, the objectives, and the next meeting.
All right. We'll see.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. I know this is not easy. I appreciate it, but it's exacerbating. Every person that, well, that's, by the way, can we get this connected? Will you call me back? Because I can't get a cell. The crazy thing is, I can hear them, they can't hear me. That's what goes on with these, and it's not because I have Comcast or, or Xfinity or A, AT Mobile. It's every phone, every carrier, doesn't matter.
I buy your house all the time on the way home from work. I drop a call every time I'm there. I hear you. I, 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 it's frustrating. I get it.
All right. I'm gonna talk to Mike and Rise Up Towers, too.
Go ahead. That's a good idea.
It's on his mind now that, now that the Sisters of Gwinnett Mercy are there.
Yeah, yeah. We thank you for, we thank you for your patience, sir.
Thank you very much.
Are there any other public comments?
You guys want to go after that?
Seeing none, we're gonna move on to building and zoning. Um, we have a presentation first by, uh, Gwinnett Mercy University, um, on land development for the Francis Amiquar Healthcare Innovation Center. Good evening.
Was it elementary school, right?
Yeah.
We, we know. Separate, separate, separate.
All right, great. So I'm, I'm Kristen Pianzio from Hamburg, Ruben Mullen, Maxwell and Loop, and I'm here representing Gwinnett Mercy University. Uh, we are here to talk to you about the Health Innovation, um, campus, and I'm here with, uh, the president of the university, Deanne D'Amelio. I have Steve Freeman, who is the director of Campus Projects and Construction, also a licensed architect. Our civil engineer, George Hartman. Next to him, our registered landscape architect, Travis North. So the whole team is here. Is this even on?
I don't know. I don't, it doesn't sound like it.
It's on.
Is it?
Okay.
Okay.
Um, we spent some time with your planning commission. We appeared there in August to discuss this plan, and then we went back in January. In that time, we went to work on the issues that they, um, charged us with. And so, uh, we come here before you with a unanimous recommendation from them with conditions. There's things that they want to see added on to any approval resolution. Uh, but to start, it's okay if I walk over because the laser pointer doesn't work. Okay. So, um, at the top of the page, this is University Drive, uh, the seminary is across the street over here, Evans Road. So the Health Innovation Center is in the center. Um, you'll see you have the triplex down here. It's sort of, it's the hub is what we're doing. We're connecting Genardi Hall on the left, the triplex here. We have, um, connected paths, provided, uh, fire access per the fire marshal. Uh, we have a parking lot that has been increased to not only service what's there today, but what's necessary for the Healthcare Innovation Center. Um, as you know, Gwinnett Mercy is known for its health program. Um, and this is our, uh, next step in providing a state-of-the-art, uh, facility for technology. They're adding speech and language pathology. They are collaborating the BSN program with the ABSN and OT program. They're gonna be able to provide simulation for nurses for their clinicals. Uh, there's going to be a centralized wellness center in this facility where there, there'll be a nurse counseling, um, and specific, uh, or special accommodation testing will, will happen here. Uh, so they're doing some reconfiguration to sort of centralize everything in this area, plus it will also act as a, an event space. In the event, um, there is room outside, there is, um, beautiful gardens in the back that come with this, uh, development. So the building got a little smaller. It was originally seventy thousand and change. It's now sixty-two thousand, six hundred and eight square feet. Since we went to the planning commission in August, we revised the plans, got new review letters, and then went to the planning commission. Um, so there's two hundred and ninety parking spaces in total existing. There's a hundred and thirty-two, a hundred and fifty-eight are new. So, um, we did, uh, in going through the planning commission, we got through all the waivers. I have those to discuss with you. We don't have a problem with any of the review letters. Uh, we did get a new letter from the arborist at Gilmore and Associates. They had some questions about some of the determinations by our arborist. They spoke today, and they have come to terms. She agrees with his analysis, and I'm sure she's gonna issue a letter. She said she would, but we couldn't get that done by today. Um, we'll work.
I'm sorry, let me, can I just ask you a quick question? We're talking about the October twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-three review letters. I just want to make sure we're working off the same review letters.
Yes, but we got a new Bowman letter.
I entered that up for, for the arborist.
No.
Oh, no, there's a, there's a new Bowman letter. Okay.
There's a new Bowman letter about a traffic impact fee. Our traffic engineer spoke to your traffic engineer. They also have come to terms to work out that issue. But on February twenty-second, the Gilmore arborist wrote a review letter. That's what I was referring to.
Okay.
Um, and so the two arborists spoke. She's satisfied with his responses. She's going to issue a new letter. So assuming all of that is true, the only thing that we are here to discuss are the waivers and what we've done to deal with the tree replacement, which was our hot button issue with your planning commission as usual. Um, so if it's okay, I'd like to hand you the.
Before you go forward about the Gilmore letter, so the, your engineer, your arborist and Gilmore's arborist have come to a consensus, but we don't know what that consensus is, and they've not been able to communicate that to us.
Um, Jim, Dean, here's Jim.
I spoke with, our arborist talked to theirs today. I spoke with our arborist Val, uh, this afternoon, and she characterized their discussion similar to Kristin's in that um, she generally agrees with, um, their arborist's assessment and that he was gonna provide some additional information, and, and at that point, if the additional information is sufficient, then she would be able to write a cleaner letter basically saying that she agrees with.
So this talks about why some trees were identified as fair, poor, things of that nature?
Yeah, it was mostly why some of the trees that he characterized as being structurally deficient were in, in fact, structurally deficient.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, I have handed you, um, our waiver letter. Uh, as you can see at the top, it was revised January seventeen. So the first waiver has to do with the preliminary and final being concurrent. This is a typical waiver that we requested the township and have received in the past. We can cover both the preliminary and final requirements in the same submission, which we've done here, and that's why we're asking for that waiver.
So we don't have all of the, the letters as it relates to this actual project today. I understand you're here for preliminary and consideration of final, but if we don't have.
You do have all your review letters.
We don't have the arborist.
Have the arborist report.
Oh, she's represented that. I'll let Jim say it again.
No, we, I would like to see it. I understand.
I completely understand, and I agree with you that.
I'm not, yeah.
I think the discussion tonight is regarding the waivers and how you feel about them.
Oh.
And then with the potential to direct Neil to create a, a resolution.
Okay.
And, and in the meantime, we'd hope that she would get you that written confirmation. These? Do we already have these, or are these just? They're the same from the planning commission meeting.
But this, this wasn't in the packet, right?
No.
It wasn't in the packet.
Yeah. This is the first we're seeing.
We haven't seen this.
The January fourteenth one.
Uh, the January seventeenth letter.
That's unfortunate.
We did.
I mean, I, I.
Okay, there's not.
I'm just telling you that it is.
Okay. Um, can we go over them? There's only seven, so I think that it wouldn't be too hard to get through. Okay, great. So the second has to do with curb sidewalk ultimate right-of-way dedication along Sumney Town and Evans. We've received this waiver in the past for other projects. Um, as you know, Gwinnett Mercy is one huge hundred and fifty acre parcel with frontage along all those streets. What the planning commission did request of us is to provide the easement for the trail along Evans. That same request was made, if you remember, when the high school came in, that we provide that easement. Um, so we've agreed to do that.
So there would be no requirement that you put in a sidewalk. Is that right?
Correct.
Is that right, Jim?
So they want us to waive the actual requirement because the requirement exists.
Yes, the, the requirement is curb sidewalk, uh, ultimate right-of-way dedication on both road frontages, Sumney Town and Evans.
So you're gonna, for, for the waiver, you're gonna provide us with the trail, with, with the easement for the trail?
Correct, on Evans, yes.
So we're at some point gonna have to build the trail?
If you want to, yes.
But you would have to build the curb and the sidewalk if we don't grant the waiver.
Correct. We would have to build all of it if you didn't grant the waiver.
So why wouldn't you just build the trail instead of just giving us an easement for the trail?
Well, part of the discussion, the last slide in what I have to present to you is the trail system throughout the campus. So that was a question that your planning commission brought up. What have you done relative to a trail system? And so we did that. We came up with an exhibit and put in it. If we could, Jamie, go to the last.
Well, I, I understand. I know you guys have an extensive trail system. I understand that. But I guess my point is if we didn't grant the waiver, you'd have to incur the cost for the sidewalks and the curbs, right?
Yes.
So why won't, can you agree to incur the cost for the trail if and when we decide to build it?
The only issue that we have is as you get to the edge of our property, there is a culvert which prevents the trail from ever connecting along Evans.
But that, I, on one side of Evans?
On our side of Evans.
I, I understand that, but the.
What are you talking about?
Well, that, that, there still could be a trail. You're just saying there's one part.
It would stop, yeah.
I, that I understand. I get that, I get that.
Yeah.
My question is if the township decides to build a trail that they want to do, that they want to somehow connect what the Gwinnett Mercy, the, the high school and the, if we wanted to connect the trail somewhere, and we came back to you in five years, ten years, fifteen years and said, look, we're gonna do it now. You didn't have to pay for the sidewalks then. But my point is, you'd have to pay for the sidewalks if we didn't waive it. Why wouldn't you just agree to pay for that trail?
Well, because we just think it's a waste of money to put it out there because it doesn't connect and can never connect on our side of the street. So we'd rather, I mean, yes, you have the fortitude as a second-class township to require us to put sidewalks in along our frontage at any time and assess us. So ultimately, you can force the university to put sidewalk in along their frontage. So if you're asking, would we agree to install it upon your request? I would confer with my client, but I would suppose the answer would be yes.
Okay, okay. I, I, I just, it, it confused me in the waivers just because you said you were gonna, you know, the, the agreement was you'll give us an easement, but then we would, and I understand you don't see a reason for it. I, I get that part of it.
Yeah, yeah.
But we might see a reason for it.
And that's fine. I guess I'm skipping a lot of conversation that happened with the planning commission. We had two.
I read the minutes.
Yeah, but we had two robust two-and-a-half-hour meetings with them talking about the trail system, and they felt that what we're doing on the interior made more sense than to do or spend money along the exterior, especially since the connection can't be made. So I don't mean to skirt the issue, just that I felt that this was more important relative to the interior. But if you want us to agree to put it in along our section.
We may never come to pass.
Yeah.
I'm just, I, I'm just trying to understand.
Yeah.
Sort of the logistics of it, that's.
That's, and that's fine. I think there was also some question during those meetings about the reality of putting it in, and that culvert is really a barrier. You would need a bridge and whatever. So I just want to set the expectations, but if, if when it happens.
Never come back to you.
Yeah.
You know, it's like, uh, The Godfather. We may never come back for the fact, but, you know, and, and my, my only point is if we're gonna agree to waive it and you'd have to pay for it anyway, it just seems like a fair trade-off that if we do come back and say, because one of the things we've gotten with regard to our comprehensive plan is we don't have sidewalks in the township.
Yeah.
So.
We don't have connectability.
And so we want to, we, that, that is an issue for our twenty-year comprehensive plan. So everyone that comes before us sort of from now on is gonna get asked that question.
So, um, can you slide that slide up a little bit? So we can see the bottom along Sumney Town. So one of our earlier land developments, you can see the, uh, pink that runs along Sumney Town. That's an extension of the trail that goes back into the Trueland Trail System, and we did that as part of the land development. And it did sit there like that for twenty years, not twenty, probably about fifteen. And then we just did the trail extension that comes from the entrance of our property down to, uh, down to where the stadium is. That, that's all new. So we don't have a problem doing that. We've done that forever at this point, so.
And it may never happen. You understand. I just don't, I just.
So, you know.
We're not having kids come back and ask for.
Yeah, ideally if we got together and, and, you know, did a twenty forty Monco grant and was able to do it, then that's what we would do. That's what we tried to do with the one that we just did last, last year. Unfortunately, we didn't get the grant. But we still put it in because it was part of the, the land development. So we don't have any problems talking to the township about it moving forward. You can see all the trails that we have and they were, uh, dedicated as part of the township trail system last year. So I think we'll be fine.
Yes, part of the grant application has identified all the walkways and trails on the property as part of the township.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sure. Um, the next waiver has to do with providing a traffic impact study. Your traffic engineer did not have an objection to that waiver. He did make a comment and if there was any redevelopment further in the campus that they would revisit that requirement at that time. I'm gonna skip the replacement trees just for a second because that's a bigger conversation. That's number four, so I'll go to number five. Um, this was requiring a ten-foot wide curb landscape island at the end of each parking row. We do have, and I'm gonna ask George to help elaborate, we do have curbed, uh, or rolling curb along those islands. Isn't that right? Hang on.
No, we, we, um, we have curb around the building, like the parking that's, parking that's adjacent to the building, there's curbing. But generally beyond that, within the parking areas, it's, it's, um, it's just asphalt pavement, which is consistent with a large portion of the campus where there isn't curbing throughout the entire campus.
Okay, next is oh, that's, the next is concrete tire bumpers, curbs, tire stops to prevent vehicle overhang. We find those to be trip hazards and, um, as George just described, there is eight-foot wide sidewalk with curbs there to protect the pedestrians from any overhang. Wheel stops aren't provided. The last one before we get into the trees has to do with streetlights along Sumney Town and Evans. That's been part of previous applications as well. That's a requirement in your code. We're asking for a waiver. And I don't think staff has an objection. Okay, if we can move to trees, Jamie, could you go back to?
I'm, I'm sorry, Kristin, I apologize. The, the Sado and storm, stormwater issues raised in the October twenty-third Gilmore letter all have been addressed.
All will comply.
Comply. Okay, great. Thank you.
No problem. Okay, so when we originally did our tree removal count on the initial submission, we used a sampling. And the sampling came up with a humongous number for tree removal. And so when we went to the planning commission, they basically had a heart attack and said, that's a lot of trees and we don't want you to just come in and say, we're gonna write a check for what we're short on the caliber inches of tree replacement. Get creative, um, and come back with something that actually benefits, uh, the environment. So what we did was hired an arborist and he went out and did a study of every tree in the disturbance area, tree by tree, and submitted his report, which your town, which your, um, staff has. So what we discovered is can you go the next slide, please, Jamie? So this is the, um, area that was studied. This is the, uh, construction area outlined in this red dotted area. And in here you see red and green. Red trees are trees that are diseased or dying or dead, as delineated in his report and are being removed. The green ones are the healthy ones that we are removing that require replacement. Next slide, please, Jamie. So healthy trees that we are removing is one thousand four hundred and fifty-seven. And this is our landscape plan that shows you, um, the existing uh, areas of trees that are not being removed as well as the new plantings there in green.
You're talking about caliber inches. You're not talking about number of trees.
I'm sorry, what?
Or are you talking about number of trees?
No, caliber inches.
Okay, you didn't say that.
Did I say trees? Yeah, thanks for that. That's the difference. One thousand four hundred and fifty. Big difference. One thousand four hundred and fifty-seven inches, caliber inches are being removed. Um, we are able to supplement and, um, and plant a great number of trees, but we are, we're still deficient by three hundred in sum. So we took a look at, and Steve spearheaded this, um, by hiring professionals to say what carbon footprint are we not removing that the trees used to? So how can we reduce our metric tonnage of carbon in another way other than through the trees that we are removing? Next slide, please. So this is the summary of his report, just for your edification. Has a total number of trees in the area of eight thirty-two. We're removing five oh three, a hundred and twenty-two. Are healthy and the carbon capabilities of those trees is nineteen point seven one metric tons per year. So we looked at how can we replace seven, nineteen point seven one metric tons. Next slide, please. Oh, not that. That's very long and very boring.
Like a hundred pages of trees.
It's sixty-nine pages.
Yeah.
That's the actual tree survey that was done. Feel free to read that in your spare time.
We did.
Really?
Yeah.
Oh, my goodness.
They gave it to us. We had to read it.
So, um, this is more interesting. This is the, uh, Evolution Sustainable, Sustainability Group, which was hired by the university to come up with a plan on how we can remove nineteen point uh, seven one metric tons of carbon per year. And they came up with two recommendations, which the university is willing to put in place. Um, one is to replace, uh, all the lights within the university. The metal halide? Halide? I always get that wrong. The metal halide light fixtures. There are three thousand five hundred and eleven light fixtures that we are going to switch out into LED lighting. The other thing that we are proposing to do is to install four their dual EV chargers. So it's eight positions of charging for, um, for the students and for employees. And with that, they did, uh, an evaluation. And if you already have this, I won't bother you with more paperwork. But if you can keep going.
We have this report.
We do.
Yeah.
I like the last page, which, where he tells you what the, the impact is. There it is. So instead of nineteen point seven one metric tons of carbon being removed per year, we're able to remove three hundred and sixty-three metric tons per year. So huge upside for the replacement. There it is. This is what I find interesting, what the equivalent is, because none of, I didn't understand what, what does that look like? And now we have some examples of eighty point eight, um, passenger vehicles for a given year. It's the equivalency of taking them off the road and they've done this in different scenarios here. So you can, um, understand in practical terms the impact of that. Uh, the planning commission, uh, commended us for our efforts and for this proposal. Uh, we also, and I was hoping that Tessie would be here, we did the green initiative evaluation of the building. Um, and we provided that to the planning commission. I have copies of that for you as to how we have taken the impact on the earth seriously with the, with this new construction.
I don't think this is part of, we don't have this, right?
You don't have this. No, I just, this is just a handout to show you that we had the architects consider.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Yeah, you're welcome. Do you want to talk about that? Here, here's the.
Just real quick, under electrical, uh, the third bullet point, it says conduit for future EV charging stations. The, the architect put that in there. Uh, they are going in those charging.
From the sustainability report.
Yes.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you.
And you did consider, um, so?
Yeah, we did consider solar and we've actually added, uh, three pounds, um, per square foot of load to the structure of the roof of the building. So that, uh, we can do that in the future. And to be honest with you, going through the, uh, sustainability report with, uh, the energy engineers, we looked at things all over the, uh, campus. And one of the things, uh, was the, uh, putting solar on roofs of some of the buildings. And, uh, some of the buildings just, most of them just aren't built for that loading now. Uh, so we actually looked at our tennis courts and maybe we could put them on the tennis courts. And that was an interesting idea, except we would have to cut a bunch of trees down behind the tennis courts to do that. So we kind of got rid of that one. And to be honest with you, these, these, um, these energy, uh, things that we're doing were, were much, much better. They had more, more of an outcome on the environment and helped it more than, than the solar. But as far as the building goes, we did add to the structure so that we could put something up there in the future if it worked out.
And that was one of the conditions of the planning commission. They recommended that we commit to adding that structural load to the roof so that if and when they can afford to put solar up there, it's already fit for it and can support it. That's it.
So, um, that's great that you guys, I mean, you took it seriously, obviously. So thank you for doing that. It's important to us. Because obviously a lot of trees are coming down, live or dead, and it's, it'll just change the look of the campus. But you need to, you don't, if you don't evolve, then the school's not gonna evolve. So I, I mean, we totally understand that. What is the timeframe for doing these improvements in the sustainability report?
We committed to, uh. No, they gave us to the end of twenty twenty-five.
Okay, so basically a year and a half to do the EV charging stations, all the light bulbs. Gotcha.
The lighting's gonna start as soon as we can do it and then when the students get out and we'll start working on that. And, um, Kristin said there, how many lights there are on campus, and that's interior and exterior lights as well. So we're, we'll start on that and, you know, we'll work on that. I, my guess is it'll take at least a year.
I'm sure. It's a lot of life.
Yeah, it's a lot. So, and there are some fixtures that'll have to be changed as well, not just the bulbs, so.
Work around students.
Yeah.
Totally get it.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you for being committed to it.
Any additional questions from the board? Thank you so much.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
So hopefully between now and your next meeting, Neil and I can work out a resolution and come back for a vote.
I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, have a great night. Good to see you.
You too.
Um, next up, well, actually just a, a, a point of note. We had two public hearings that were, um, advertised. We're only gonna be doing one this evening. Um, this public hearing is going to be to consider an ordinance amending the temporary sign regulations. I'm gonna turn it over to our solicitor.
Thank you. Hi. This is a public hearing to consider proposed ordinance five forty-three, which is an amendment to the township zoning code dealing specifically with temporary signs. Uh, the subject matter is described in Jamie Warman's memo of February twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, uh, which the board has. Um, the hearing will proceed as follows. I'll mark certain exhibits for the record. The board will then discuss the proposed ordinance and the comments received from the county and township planning commissions. Uh, the board will take public comment if there is any. Um, and the hearing will then close and the board will decide whether or not to take action on the ordinance or defer it to a later date. So Exhibit T one is the proposed ordinance. Exhibit T two is Jamie's memorandum. Exhibit T three is the advertisement for the ordinance. Exhibit T four is the affidavit of publication indicating that a summary of the ordinance was published in the reporter on February fifth and February twelfth. T five is the Montgomery County Planning Commission letter of February fourteen, twenty twenty-four, uh, with comments to the proposed ordinance. And Exhibit T six is the Township Planning Commission minutes of February twenty-one, twenty twenty-four, also with comments, uh, to the proposed ordinance. So at this point, if the board has questions, comments?
So I, I think, I guess the major question I have is I wanted to hear people's feedback as it related to the suggestions from our own planning commission.
Have you learned?
I'm sorry?
Would you like my feedback?
Not yours first. Anyone else's first.
Jamie?
Um, so their recommendations are to, um, they wanted a reference section for it to be appropriate sign standards to be more clearly, but I don't know if that's a substantive. Um, they wanted the maximum area of the sign to be eight square feet for each sign. And then, uh, commercial properties could have a choice between having five temporary signs or a eight-square-foot sign or one large sign not to exceed thirty-two square feet. Five temporary signs at eight square feet or one large sign that could be thirty-two square feet.
They mean.
Is that what they mean?
They mean four, because I think we had a restrict, I think the restriction in the ordinance is.
No, they mean five.
Oh, they mean five.
Well, I mean, I'm guessing they mean five since it's there.
Well, I thought maybe it was a type of.
Could be.
That's. Four times eight is thirty-two.
So I, I was only at a portion of the discussion, but I happened to be there when they were doing the math and they were doing the math correctly. So I think the thirty-two square feet's intentional. They were discussing thirty-two square feet and forty square feet, so. I didn't hear when they actually made that recommendation, but.
The forty square feet is what our current sign.
Our nickel?
Is the permanent sign.
What is the, what is the square footage of the sign in the proposed ordinance? I know they want it to be eight square feet. What is?
It is eight square.
It is, right? That's what I thought.
But they want it to be.
I understand. You have a choice. And, and I'll say, and I know you don't want to hear it from me yet, but I'm gonna speak anyway. Thank you. For, for me, the purpose of this ordinance was to avoid those large.
Giant signs.
Signs and allowing them to get around that by. That, that, I, I would be not in favor of adopting the third proposed change.
I still think that their proposal is smaller than some of the large signs that could be like a visual distraction that we saw, maybe.
Well, I think their point is well-taken too, that when the signs are smaller, like it's a distraction for folks who are driving on the road, like they can't. Like, does that say you can't see it? So is there a happy medium?
I think most people just ignore us.
Sure. Or think it looks like.
I, I think we, that we put, we picked eight square feet because that was what we thought, I think at the time was the least intrusive.
Yeah.
Um, on, and, and I don't think, for me, that hasn't changed. Um, I understand their point. Everything in this position is a balancing act, it seems, and I, I understand their point, but I still fall on the side of eight square feet, five signs. Um, I, I don't, I don't, I think it defeats the purpose to have, to allow them to enlarge this, the square footage. And, and I'm also, I'm, I'm not necessarily in favor of changing the days from fourteen to thirty.
Now the, now the, um, county did say that the maximum number of days for, well, their model sign ordinance recommends a maximum number of thirty days.
Yeah, they recommended thirty.
Um, but they did say so they're kind of talking about it is more restrictive to be fourteen as opposed to.
Yeah, it's hard when you're thinking about the purpose of the sign, you know?
Yeah.
Is it, or are you advertising a one-day sale or are you advertising, you know, grand opening? You might want it up to thirty days if it's.
Well, I, I guess that's the question. You could always do the thirty day, I mean, if it's a, if it's a going out of business or a grand opening, could you take the two fourteen days out of them together and you have twenty-eight days? Because you're not gonna need, if you're going out of business, you're probably gonna go out within those twenty-eight days. And if you're.
That's fair. You take it, so you take it down for a day?
No, you don't just, we, we give you two fourteen, we give you two fourteen-day terms.
And they can be consecutive.
I don't, there's not, there's nothing that prohibits. So they.
I think I thought they needed to be non-consecutive.
No, they can do that.
But if you think about this logistically, are we putting undue burden on our staff to say like, how are they? The real day that it went out, we're going to start counting that day. And then from that day, they gotta make sure that you didn't pull it up for one day and reset the clock.
But that's whether, no matter what the timeframe is, or no matter what the size is, we're putting a burden on our staff. Is, the staff's going to go out and measure. The staff's going to go out and see when a sign went up. You know, I mean, that's, any ordinance has an enforcement mechanism and that sort of goes along with it, I guess.
But what is really different between fourteen and thirty that's significant for, I guess, the driver driving by, it is, I think, significant for a staff to have to kind of keep every fourteen days watching the clock that. I mean, I don't think thirty days is something that's too extreme to keep a sign up.
Well, again, you, you could have the thirty days. You just go the back-to-back fourteen, twenty-eight.
I understood, but then that puts the, again, responsibility on the staff to have to keep track of those, you know, fourteen days, so.
Isn't there still the responsibility to step to keep track of thirty days?
A little easier, I think.
I mean, there is, however, it's just one little, I know it's, it's small when you look at it in a vacuum, but in the overall scheme of things, I think, um, what we're trying to propose here, just keeps it simple, thirty days. Kind of move on instead of having these little tiny micro controlling, you know, micro every step along the way.
Well, could we say you get two fourteen-day periods? Non-consecutive, non-consecutive, or a thirty day in a row? You get dealer's choice. You can't, you can have two non-consecutive fourteen days.
Is putting too much stress on staff. How is somebody going to know that you put it up for thirty days in January and then you're going to put it up for thirty days in November?
You're.
I mean, I just think that's, I mean, no matter what we do, there's an, there's always an enforcement concern because somebody's going to have to enforce this ordinance. I mean, no matter what we do, there's going to be some, there's going to be some difficulty involved.
I think we ask the staff, what should, is this, would this be a hardship if between fourteen days and thirty days?
Now, the, the counting of the days, so, so that, the, the tricky part here is that permits are not required. So we're not starting at day one, right? We don't know. We have to notice it. So either it's, you know, a, as staff is just doing our jobs, you know, inspections, various things to, to notice the sign and kind of note down. That's February twenty-seventh. That's the first day I've, I've seen this. So it may have been after two weeks already, but we can't approve that unless somebody else has seen it, testified something like, so the clock's going to start on whatever day we see it, or someone has complained to us about it. And we can go out and confirm. I mean, it, it is going to be, it, it's going to be very difficult to truly enforce it for, whether it's fourteen days or thirty days for that exact time for temporary signs, because of the way it's structured right now, because of the nature of temporary signs. We, you know, we just don't have that kind of staff. We don't have anyone who can be out every day, all day, just driving around, looking for these signs and, and creating an inventory of them. So as long as everybody's realistic about that. Um, and I, and, and I guess I want to make sure that the understanding is you, you don't expect us to be on top of every sign proactively, because that would be, that would just, you know, that would be, frankly, a really waste of time, I think. So as long as it's, you know, when it comes to our attention, we start tracking that. We, you know, we can create a database where we're also tracking. We know, we found this sign on February twenty-seventh at this property. So this is going to start their first fourteen day or maybe twenty-eight day window. And then maybe they're done for twenty twenty-four. I mean, that part isn't that difficult, I don't think, as long as we can stay in a reactive mood. So it's as we see it or it's brought to our attention.
I suspect it will be the latter.
Ninety-nine percent.
Yeah, so the, the counting will never, be, because it would be significantly more burdensome to have permits for every temporary sign. If even, if people even sought a permit for a temporary sign. Then this is just what, this is how they'll have to deal with the enforcement part of this going forward. But no matter what we do, there's going to be some burden on staff.
I, I agree, but I think with what we've just discussed, that's fairly real, you know, it's realistic and manageable.
Um, I guess, I guess the first question that I have for our solicitor is making a, a reference to section twelve ninety-two oh five, referring to the appropriate sign standards more clearly. Is that considered as, um, a substantive change?
Uh, are you referring to the county weather?
No, the, um, our planning commission, I'm sorry.
I think the county references.
The county made.
Oh, okay. I wrote it down as our planning commission.
I didn't personally see the need for that change.
Okay. But do you consider that a substantive change? Like if, if we made that change, we would have to.
No, I would not consider that a substance.
Okay, okay. Um, okay.
Same thing with number two. Neil, do you think that's a substantive change? Just confirming that it's eight square feet per sign?
I've seen ten.
Yeah.
So it's merely clarification, in my opinion.
Okay, thanks.
So number three and four, I'm, I'm assuming would be a substantive change.
My opinion, yes.
I, I agree that number three from the planning commission's recommendation kind of defeats the purpose of why we wanted to do this sign, this change. So I would not be in favor of adopting that recommendation. Um.
I, I agree with that.
Okay, not extending the timeframe to, um. I did have a, a little bit of a cons- concern with, um, I thought the planning commission made a good point about. Um, it was in there. What, oh, the county, yeah. Then it's like letter B under temporary sign regulations, where it talks about how there's no lot size or frontage length requirement, where we just say, you know, more than five temporary signs, but it's not tied to the size of the frontage or the lot. And I didn't really, I didn't really think about that. Like if it's a very large frontage, maybe they should be able to have the five signs, but if it's really small frontage, do we want them to have five signs? That's a lot of signs. Um. So.
It's only going to be for fourteen days.
It's true. I mean, I don't feel strongly about it. And I know we can revisit this again when we do a sort of complete overhaul, but that's the only recommendation that was raised that I would have accepted.
And I think also it's a challenge to determine exactly where you draw that line. Um, how much frontage, how large is the property?
Yeah.
So that might be something to look at during the comprehensive review of the ordinance.
Yes. Yeah.
From a simplicity perspective, it is easier if it's just five signs are permitted. At, at least to start.
Someone coming out and measuring the lot and the signs.
From my first, from my perspective, I think, um, I agree with Neil's interpretation. One or two aren't really, I think three really defeats the entire purpose of what the ordinance attempting to accomplish. Um, I'm not opposed to extending it to thirty days, but after you really think about it, it's going to be once we discover it. And realistically, I would assume that nobody's going to discover anything on day one. So they're probably going to get more than fourteen days anyway. Um, it doesn't seem so much of a big deal to me. That's where I stand. I don't know. Anyone else wants to share their thoughts? Do you have any thoughts you want to share, Mr. Tursky?
You don't think I've shared enough of my thoughts?
I don't have any additional.
I've shared all my thoughts on this issue.
Jamie?
No, I, I, I agree with your sentiments on this too.
There are any questions or comments from the public?
You're still here.
Seeing none? I think we're done, sir.
If I heard correctly, um, you will be, the motion will be to adopt the ordinance with uh, the one clarification being that it's eight square feet for each sign, which is to the planning commission's recommendations?
Correct.
Alright, so if somebody wants to make.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, adopt the, the, the ordinance. Let me see if I have the ordinance number. Uh, five forty-three. Um, with the recommend, the second recommendation of our, or when it's planning commission to revise section two B three, clarifying the maximum area of eight square feet being for each sign. Is there a second? All those in favor?
Hi.
I thought.
Thank you.
Close the record.
It's going to let Mike do it. I thought this, everyone had to second it. So weird being so far apart.
If I may, I, I just wanted to call the board's attention to the fact that we have a new court reporter, Mark Manjardi. Am I saying your last name correctly?
Welcome, welcome.
Thank you so much. Um. Next up is recommendations for township projects to be submitted to Montgomery County for the twenty fifty transportation project priorities. Traffic engineer, Mr. Dixon.
Uh, good evening. Um, in your meeting packet, it was a, a memo our office drafted, um, summarizing um, a new planning initiative being, um, started by the Montgomery County Planning Commission, updating the county comprehensive plan. This one's going to be called Monco twenty fifty, uh, instead of twenty forty. Um, they're just getting started on the effort. One of the, um, uh, things that they have done, the township received in early February a solicitation for them uh, to submit transportation priority projects, for them to take into consideration for the transportation element of the county comprehensive plan. Um, and really what they want to use this input for is to develop what they call their project vision, uh, list um, for the county comprehensive plan. Um, so they've asked for, uh, priority projects, uh, multimodal in nature, can be bicycle, uh, pedestrian, roadway intersection and bridges. Um, and, um, basically what they're asking for is whether there's any projects where you do have a defined scope already, or things that may be more in the idea stage um, that you would like to see implemented, um, in the future. Um, so what we did was, um, a review of the township's cap, five-year capital plan. Um, the transportation impact fee study, went through, um, recent planning initiatives, um, by the township. Um, and discussed with staff and, uh, Gilmore came up with a list of ten projects here. I think most of these you've seen um, in the past is either part of the annual capital plan, um, development or through land development um, projects, um, or other, um, planning initiatives. Um, so, um, we just, the county's asking for, uh, the municipalities to submit uh, their list of projects, um, by March first. So we, um, wanted to bring the list that we've developed, uh, to you this evening to see if you had any input, questions, um, things you want us to consider in the list, um, before, um, it is submitted to the county. Um, so I'll stop there and see if you have any, any questions or comments.
No, thank you. It appears that it's due Friday, so we appreciate the timeliness of getting it to us. Um, the only question I actually had, um, I have cross-section for left turns from Bethlehem Pike to three oh nine. I'm trying to, what it, which, what are you talking about there?
Yeah, um, so from, um, the Spring House intersection over to three oh nine, currently there's two lanes in each direction, but no left turn lanes or a center left turn lane area in that segment. Um, when the Spring House Innovation Project, uh, came before the township back in two thousand nineteen, they had proposed to provide a five-length cross-section across the segment. Um, so cars could get out of the through lanes to, to make left turns. That hasn't gone forward at this point. Um, but we would like to keep it on everybody's radar screen as a project, whether it's, you know, a developer or the township through its impact fee, money, or on the tip. It's a project the township would still like to see implemented at some point in the future.
I appreciate that you included a lot of the pedestrian gaps and pedestrian walkways that we had prioritized. Um, they are important. I don't know if there's any additional questions or concerns from the board? Any from the public?
Hey, thank you. Well, Smith East, the county.
Thank you.
Um, next up is authori- authorization to advertise an ordinance amending chapter two eighty-two of the township code revising the structure of the historic advisory committee. There's a memo included in the board packet and it was published online. It essentially outlines some, some changes to the historic, um, advisory committee. Um, and that is included in the board packet as well. Are there any questions from the board? Questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a motion to advertise, um, the amendment to chapter two eighty-two of the township code revising the structure of the historic advisory committee. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Look at that. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine, authorizing submission of the Monco twenty forty grant for the Penland Station Trail. Um, included in the board packet is a memo from our staff outlining um, the application and the connection, discussing the total of the project, which is four hundred and forty-four thousand four hundred and eighteen dollars. We're going, intending to provide a forty-seven point seven-five percent match to complete the proposed project. Um, are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public? Seeing none, I'd like to make a, a motion to, um, authorize submission of the Monco twenty forty grant for Penland Train Station, uh, resolution twenty twenty-four oh nine. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is a review of the township engineer report for February two thousand and twenty-four. Included in that, uh, report is, oh, work performed last period and work to be performed this period up and through March twenty-sixth. Are there any questions from the board? Any questions from the public?
I have a couple of questions. I'm sorry.
Go ahead, sir.
I really just wanted to get an update on, um, John's Lane and Precision Watch. If, if there's anything going on, there may, there may not be. I see, I, I sort of can see what's going on at Precision Watch.
Yeah, so, um, let's start at John's Lane, because I, I know more about that one. We had the pre-construction meeting and they have marked out the limits of disturbance. Um, they're going to start tree clearing in the middle of March, I think. So, um, before that trick, before that clearing happens, our office will walk the site with, um, you know, their contractor to make sure that the limits of clearing are accurate per the plan. And, and then they'll proceed with construction. I think they're also going to mark out the property line between, who's the, what's the neighbor's name, Jamie?
Um, they're going to mark out the property line for Lesko, Joanne Lesko.
Joanne Lesko and the, uh, the common property line between her and the project will be marked out so that that can be agreed upon. And then there was, I think, a, a change to relocate the, uh, construction entrance away from her driveway so as not to provide, or, you know, whatever, have any kind of.
Closer towards tennis?
Yeah, they're actually going to, um, kind of just stay on the inside of the current road right now. Um, because the Hueses will have to actually be able to get back to their house as well. So they're just kind of, kind of put it right next to it. Yeah.
We go through there.
Yeah, so it's, it's down, that, that's actually a really good solution, I think, um, for Mrs. Lesko, because she had, um, specifically requested that it be shifted. And the way they're planning on doing it, um, will accomplish that.
So under normal circumstances, when work is beginning, it sounds like the tree clearing is the sort of beginning of the real work. Would the neighbors ever get notified or just like, you'd hear the chainsaws?
I don't think the neighbors would be notified.
Okay.
There's no mechanism in place to notify.
That, that was my only question. And should we, should we notify the neighbors given what's been going on with this property for years now, that in the middle of March, the chainsaws and bulldozers are coming to take down the trees, just so they're prepared, so that at eight o'clock in the morning, they don't just hear that one day. I, I'm, I'm just wondering. eight o'clock in the morning, they don't just hear that one day, and, and I'm, I'm just wondering, if there's, that just seems like the neighborly thing to do, and given the relationship between some of the neighbors, I'm not sure the neighborly thing is going to happen here.
Like, is it legal for us to kind of notify them?
Sure.
We could do that, just as a courtesy?
Are you thinking something on the website, or an actual?
I'm thinking a little bit more personal than that, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, that's just what I'm thinking, um.
Like a letter just to those neighbors, not to the entire township, it's just for those impacted neighbors, yeah.
From the developer? Well, we probably should talk to the developer before we send something and just say, hey, just given everything that's going on, we just wanted to let the neighbors know what's happening. I mean, I, can somebody just reach out and see if we can get sort of a kind of firm date when this is gonna happen? Because it's ultimately, I think, it's gonna be better for the developer, too, if the, if this doesn't catch the neighbors by surprise, and it's gonna be better for staff, because they're just gonna call here complaining, so I just think it would make more sense for everybody if they just talked, and I know that's not gonna happen.
Okay.
So, is that? Tell me where, tell me where I've gone wrong legally. With respect to this, or general? With respect to this, thank you. I gotta sign a letter tonight? I don't mind now, but with the court reporter, you're gonna have to take the sound later.
I'm sorry.
No, this is fine.
I forgot it was here, I did.
Okay, maybe reach out and just sort of see, and then, uh, we can talk about the mechanism, but honestly, like, I don't, I believe I'm gonna actually say this, but I don't mind, I'll walk down there one day and, you know.
That's what I was gonna say, I mean, even, um, Mike and I have walked down there enough and talked to those people, we might just walk down there.
Yeah, it just might be easier just to knock on doors and say, I just wanna let you know, like, this is happening.
Um, we can, I mean, we can send, it's, it's just John's Lane, I mean, it's not,
not a big.
It's not highly popular, you know, and.
No, no, it's not, and I.
We can send a letter, and we can also reach out to the developer to make sure that they can give us a firm.
Yeah, as firm as they can, and if somebody can maybe just also reach out to Ms. Lesko, that, that probably would just be.
I think Jamie's better.
Yeah, it's like the kind of polite thing to do, because I don't think the developer will, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Hughes won't.
Yeah, and I did, I did actually put it in the, in the paper newsletter, I, I added that in, because I knew it was gonna go to construction soon, just to give people a heads up in that, in the newsletter as well.
They might have some impact on traffic, some degree.
Yeah.
And then the other question was Rolex.
Precision, yeah, Rolex.
Precision watches.
Are they on, are they on path to sort of, I know that there were issues early in the construction.
So from a site work perspective, they're on, on par and on path, but I, I'm not aware of how the building construction has been going.
Okay.
Um, we're gonna, uh, have Kelly Scarlett come to the Building and Zoning Committee meeting, uh, this, the next one, the March one, just to kind of give an update on the building, um, piece. They, they're, they're struggling along a little bit, but, um, but she'll be able to give you better information, but right now, they're working through, the, uh, sprinkler system, so.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Next up is, uh, the review of the Traffic Engineer Report for February twenty twenty-four. Are there any questions for our traffic engineer?
This is Jim's light. Catch you next time, man.
Any comments or questions from the public? Being none? Thank you so much, Chad, we appreciate it. Next up is Resolution twenty twenty-four ten, authorizing signers for Citadel account. Um, included in our packet is a letter, um, to our Township Manager from our Finance Director outlining the process and the selection of Citadel, um, being named as a signer for our three accounts. Included is Resolution twenty twenty-four, which is included in the packet. Are there any questions about this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public? Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution twenty twenty-four ten, authorizing signers for Citadel account, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you so much. Next up is a review of our financials in our year-to-date, um, those of our funding cash balances for January twenty twenty-four, are there any questions? For our Finance Director?
I'm just gonna ask about the red, because it's so stark and it stands out, and I'm sure it's just a issue that I don't understand, why is there a twenty-eight thousand dollar? Yeah, on the rec one.
It's negative now?
Okay, not, not now, that's because it was just January, and normally we budget transfers to go into the parks and rec, a transfer has not occurred yet.
I figured it was something that's simple, but the public sees it, might as well get a question answered.
That, that is why.
I figured that, thank you.
Any additional questions or concerns? Being none? Thank you so much. Next up is the approval of our invoices, has everyone had time, taken time to review the invoices? Any questions or concerns? Being none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the invoices, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next up is approval of the minutes from our February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting. Um, we were missing Ms. Martin at that meeting, so I'm just asking you two, have you taken a, a, um, review of those minutes? Any questions or concerns? I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for our February thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four meeting, is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go. Congratulations. Supervisor liaison reports are included in the packet. Um, are there any questions or concerns regarding the liaison reports? Next up is staff updates. Anyone have updates from? Yeah?
One online.
Oh, there's one online.
Good evening, everyone, this is John Farrell, can you hear me?
Yes. Hey, John.
Hi, just wanted to give a quick update on the Ingersoll property. Um, I'm happy to say that I've had a chance to meet with our new real estate consultant, Lee Barry, who is gonna help us market the property. Um, I was able to get her all the information she needed, so that she can start preparing our marketing materials. Uh, so we're gonna be working on getting some professional photography of the property, uh, and she's getting all kinds of different materials together, um, mostly electronic, um, with the intent that we're gonna take this and distribute the information widely, so that we can, uh, really generate some interest, uh, in the property. So we are gonna be scheduling some open houses, um, and I, reason I wanna talk about this tonight until everyone is to make sure that you all know that when this is ready, we wanna push this out as far as we can, uh, and then ultimately, um, you know, assuming we get to the point of doing an auction, that will of course be uh, promoted widely and as early as possible. Um, so I'm happy to take any questions, I just wanted to report on our progress tonight.
Thank you, John, any questions? Thank you so much, John.
Thanks.
Any additional staff updates? Being none, supervisor comments, Ms. Martin?
Um, the only thing that I will add is that, um, we have our Easter egg hunt coming up, March twenty-third in the morning, um, so I know we have another meeting before then, but I just wanted to document that, so that folks who are listening and paying attention will have it on the calendar, bring the kids. That's all I have.
Jimmy?
Um, nothing really to add, but the March twenty-third Easter egg hunt, it sounds like a fun event.
Mike?
Um, I seem to say the same thing at every meeting, but it's important, because I do feel that they're the most important part of the township, and it's our first responders, and it's up to date today. And, um, yeah, I said at every meeting, but thanks to you guys, what you do, um, this one couldn't have been easy or good, and, um, I'm just grateful that you're part of Lower Gwinnett, and, um, I see that we are ranked, uh, hot fourth of forty-something in the state as the safest, uh, municipality, so kudos, chief, please pass that along. Thank you.
Um, I just wanna remind everybody that we are having a joint board supervisor meeting with the EAC on Thursday, February twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-four. Absolutely wanna echo what Mike has said, um, and we're looking forward to the Easter egg hunt. With that, I'd like to make a motion to dismiss, is there a second?
Again.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is dismissed.
Sure.
It's like, it's like a weird review.
I mean, I feel like I'm in front of a judge.